We've got a quorum if we want to get started. Okay. I call the August 4th Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. Macy, can you make, can you call, make a roll call, please?
Trustee Blakemore.
Here.
Here. Trustee Corvalon. Mayor Protem Mohol.
Here. And Trustee Baumhofer is in the building. He'll be back in a few minutes. Let the record show that he's entered the room.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great entrance. Okay, we're underway. Seven oh seven. Let's go right to the consent agenda. Four dot one is approval of warrants. Any objections on any of those? We're going to look at, I'm sure you read the, the July 19th, July 29th, and August 2nd BOT minutes. And it shouldn't be news, but the US Solar Memorandum of Understanding is in there. There's nothing shocking, nothing that's really changed. And do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. And Macy, can you call the vote, please?
Of course. Mayor Protem Mohol.
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
You there, Tanya?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. And Trustee Blakemore?
Yes, except I wasn't there for the July 19th meeting, but I did read the many meeting minutes.
Great. Okay, consent agenda passes. We'll move on to section five, public comment on non-agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Prior providing comment, speaker should state their name and indicate whether or not they're a Netherland resident. If not a resident, the speaker should indicate their affiliation with the town. Who has signed up, Macy?
We have Don Baumhofer with us tonight in the room, and there may be some people who are online as well. I'm not sure yet.
Terrific.
Thank you.
And then as others come in, keep track, let me know. Thanks.
Hello, I don't-
Is your mic on, Don?
Probably not.
Okay. Tanya, can you hear okay? Oh, there we go.
Test. Okay, better? Don Baumhofer, Netherland resident. I am here to speak in support of, in support of retaining our own police department if there is any way possible to do so. And I just wanted to comment that our Marshal Jennifer Fine Lovin is a tremendous asset to town. She has the unique traits and skill sets of being a great community police officer. And also she has the ability and the skill sets required to lead the department into the future with the professional, with the professionalism that would be needed to do so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Much appreciated. Macy, who's next?
There's no one who currently has their hand raised.
Can I talk?
Who is this?
Kathleen Chippai.
Yes, indeed. Thanks, Kathleen.
Sure. Kathleen Chippai, thirty-one-year resident, nineteen-year business owner. When I logged on to today's meeting, I noticed there was a meeting earlier today with all the town board people. And I just wanted to say I was disappointed to see that it was being held at the very nice brew pub. I really don't think we need to add alcohol to town discussions. I hate to say it, but I just, I kind of was surprised at that. So I just wanted to voice that and hope that future meetings don't happen in liquor establishments. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. Anything else? You've got a little bit of time.
No, that'd be it right now.
Thanks a bunch.
Just a heads up, there's also an event happening at Salto and I believe New Moon, so the idea was simply to try to gather all different folks of Ned, but appreciate that point.
Yeah, I'm learning the hard way about office hours at Salto to take it to more than one establishment. But it's a valid point and I appreciate it. Thanks, Kathleen. Macy, Miranda, who's next?
It does not appear anyone-
Don, thanks a bunch for coming. That's it? Okay. Randy Mormon was on the list. Is he not on the line?
Who?
Five dot one, public comment, Randy Mormon.
No, I think he just submitted a comment for you to read in the packet.
Okay, got it.
Can you guys hear me?
We do.
This is Melody Baumhofer, Netherland resident. First, I don't know why, but for some reason I'm restricted from getting on online. I see Miranda just texted me back, so thanks, Miranda. Second, I would like to state that I understand that there is, you know, an agenda item for a long-term discussion of the PD. I think it is a priority for the BOT to assist town staff in a short-term solution. What I understood from our Marshal when she spoke a few weeks ago was that she needed a commitment from the BOT and from Town Hall to keep our police department for years to come in order to retain anybody. So I think that there needs to be on the agenda sometime soon, as soon as possible, a commitment from the BOT to keep our police department, do whatever it takes to keep them for the next few years, and, and support our chief in that way. She needs whatever needs to be done to keep our police department. And I have another comment for later on, but that's all I'll say now. So thank you guys for your time.
Okay, you've got time. You're sure you're done? Okay. Thank you. The part of, part of doing whatever it takes is making sure you have the funding to do it. That's a discussion that's underway right now. It's very likely to come to the voters in November. We're going to be looking at this, it looks like during discussion items. There are ways to raise money that we're looking at, actively looking at, and we have to run pretty quickly to stay within statutory timelines. Any other public comment?
No.
Macy, you seeing anything?
So I have it over here. Macy can't, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Last call for section five for public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, then we move to informational items, six dot one. Miranda, you want to set that up?
So we have brought before you the Economic Vitality Boulder County funding that we had received, which is $12,000 between the town of Netherland and the NDVA. This is funding we get every year. In prior years, the town and the DDA have used it to help to purchase COVID supplies. This year, we'd like to do what we had done with CARES funding two years ago that would allow us to just give the money to businesses. And it's really, we're not putting much stipulations on it. What we'd like to do is release it next Friday. If you apply, we'll split the pool evenly amongst all the businesses that apply. We're trying to keep it very simple where you just have to indicate how you, yes, one page, you have to indicate how you're going to use the funds, just so we can have it for reporting sake. We are encouraging businesses to use it to compensate employees and then also to offset any of their operating expenses that they may be struggling with as a repercussion of COVID-19. So we just wanted to bring it back to you to show you that we did make the application, that the plan is to just run it by the DDA to under informational, and that we will then release it. We'll leave it open for a month. We'll blast it out through all of our networks in hopes that we get quite a few applicants. Obviously, $12,000 is not a ton of money, but you know, it's a little bit that we can give to businesses. We'd like to do so. So really, it's before you tonight, just to ask you if you have any questions about the process we've outlined or the application.
What, how do you get the word out and what's your deadline for getting returns back?
Yeah, so we asked for a month for a return, so we would ask for it to be returned in September, and I apologize, I don't have the date right in front of me. We would blast it through the Business List Serve, which we have with Town compiled off of all of the Netherland businesses. We would look to the DDA to outline it through, put a shit out through their networks. We would also use social media and then, of course, word of mouth. And we try to leave it open for enough time for it to circulate and again, make for a really easy application.
Okay, that's great. Board questions?
Sounds great.
Go ahead. Tanya?
It sounds good.
Okay, that's great. You did that well within three minutes. Karen?
I just want to thank the staff for putting the effort in to put this program together, you know, any, even though it's a small amount, it will help the businesses.
Right. Miranda, have you got any indication upfront that some, that some people want to apply?
Yeah, so when we did the CARES funding, the DDA had received CARES funding, and they did this exact same thing where it was basically just distributed amongst how many businesses applied and that were operating within a COVID timeframe. If I recall correctly, we had maybe thirty to forty applicants. That was a much larger pool of money where each entity got about $3,000. But we would still look to see hopefully the same amount and, and you know, if anything, it's just a contribution to, as a thank you to all of them. We realize, you know, how it gets split up. It may not be a ton of money to give to staff, but perhaps it could go to their staff in the form of just a little bonus or whatever that might look like, depending on how we split apart the funding.
Does staff need anything more from us on this one?
No, we'll just obviously report back to you once we know how the funds are distributed. We'll let you know like how much each business got. But we're excited to launch this next Friday.
Whoever's listening, free money, come and get it.
Yes.
Okay, that's the, that's, we only have one item on informational items. That concludes it. Anything else anybody wants to say about six dot one? We're good. We move on to action items, section seven. Miranda, this is aim for SAB alternate appointments. Set it up, please.
Yes, so the Sustainability Advisory Board back in February had approved their bylaws, which included adding in an alternate member. Originally, former, excuse me, it was a former trustee app was the alternate. In June 2022, he moved to a regular board member, which left that alternate open. We received three applications. As of today, though, Max Link has, as of yesterday, he did withdraw his application, leaving us with two. And at their SAB meeting on July 28th, they recommended unanimously that Patricia Dow would be appointed. She is here tonight, and the other applicant had provided a YouTube video, which was sent out to the Board of Trustees for your review. We weren't necessarily going to play it tonight. It is available. It just is a little complicated on WebEx, but Patricia is here if you have any questions, as well as representatives of the Sustainability Advisory Board.
Patricia, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Right. So how did you get recommended? Tell us what you're bringing.
Sure. My background is in public policy and conservation, including working on a number of climate issues. Everything from renewable energy, energy efficiency as it relates to water, as well as water efficiency, excuse me, wildfire mitigation. I've worked in the past with a variety of nonprofit organizations, and I currently serve in the Governor's Office of Community Service, where I lead their work, our work, the state's work, excuse me, on climate change and disaster relief. And I've been a Netherland resident initially for about five years. I lived in Old Town and left for a little bit for work. And I am a resident in Big Springs for the past three years.
Terrific. I'm working on a watershed ordinance. Maybe you can help me with that.
Okay, what is the watershed ordinance that you're working on?
Let's have coffee. We'll talk about it.
I am familiar with it, so yes, I am definitely interested.
Great. We've got our watershed map pretty much put together. Ordinance language is largely put together. So I think, I'm looking forward to working with you on that and some of the other issues like mitigation and wildfire safety that we have to deal with as a town. I'm really glad you put your hand up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions for Patricia Dow that you'd like to address? Jonathan is no. Karen? Tanya?
No, thanks so much for stepping up and volunteering with the town.
This, we have the option of bringing in public comment. Is anybody online that wants to talk?
Not seeing any.
Okay. Patricia, thanks a bunch. Let's talk at some point soon. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting your hand up and for your public service. I appreciate it.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay, so we're through action items. That's all we've got for action items.
So we will need you to get a motion to appoint Patricia if that's your desire to the Sustainability Advisory Board alternate position.
I'll make that move to approve the appointment of Patricia Dow as alternate to SAB with the term ending June 1st, 2025.
Second. Macy, can you call the vote?
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
No.
Mayor Protem Mohol?
Yes.
And Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. Before we move on, what are the duties of an alternate?
So the alternate will serve as a voting member if they are short quorum. So that would help them just to get to quorum, or if they were short a member, they didn't have their full seven-member board. She, that Patricia could start, could vote on any action items. Otherwise, she would be a participatory board member and be able to weigh in on any discussion. But if there happened to be eight of them there, she would just would not vote.
Okay. And how big is the board right now and what's their quorum?
There's seven board members, so Patricia is now the alternate, so for eight in quorum is four.
Four. Okay, good. Board, any other questions before we move on? We're good? Okay, that's it for action items. We move on to discussion items. Again, discussion items are open for discussion. That includes the public. Can we, can you set the stage, please, Miranda, and talk about the aim?
I was going to have Attorney Mountson do that because she prepared the aim.
Right.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, public. The matter before you tonight is potential tax increases for the town of Netherland on the November 22 ballot. We have discussed this at the last couple of meetings, July 19th, and then at a work session, July 22nd. I've largely included the language from those other previous discussions in the aim so that you all have that background information. What is new tonight is the ballot language. So the ballot language is added for each of the different taxes that, at the work session, that you gave a thumbs up for moving forward with drafting ballot language. So we have retail sales tax ballot language, special retail marijuana sales tax language, and then property tax language. And really what I'm looking for tonight in terms of moving forward and finalizing any ballot language would be identification of percentages that you want to increase. And then also if you want to identify earmarking in each of the, each of the questions. Do you want to tell the public that the funds will be used for a particular purpose?
Okay. This, who ran the survey, Miranda? Is that something that staff did?
Yes, staff released the survey, and then Barb Hart helped to also pass it through her networks, so.
And on the sales tax issue, it looks like we had a pretty good response in terms, it's quite a mix of businesses. And the answer is the business committee by almost two-thirds supports a sales tax increase within some bounds, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so let's open it up first to board members about how you're feeling. We looked, we identified four potential sales tax, or four potential taxation options to put on the ballot, right?
Three.
Three. Okay, there were sales tax. There was property tax, and the third one was occupation.
The third was the retail marijuana.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Okay, so each of you has read the packet and, and the survey. What are you thinking? You want to go first, Karen?
Sure, I'll go first. So I read the survey and, and reading the responses, I, there, it seemed like the majority of the responses were, had, had concerns about the sales tax. And the concern being that tax, sales tax is already very high. I, you know, I'd like to see a comparison with other municipalities in Boulder County. And so, you know, it might mean less, less revenue for the businesses because the people would shop elsewhere where the sales tax is lower. And I kind of find things to be more expensive in Netherland than in, in Boulder. So, so, you know, and, and I, I shop predominantly in, in Netherland. And I would continue to do that because I have the finances to be able to do that, but I'm not sure that it may impact our residents negatively. Likewise, with the property tax, when I was campaigning for this position, one big issue that people had was the cost of housing. And not just to the mortgage that they were paying and to purchase a house, but also folks that have lived here for a long time, and they may be retired, they may be on a fixed limited income. The property tax is a huge amount that they're paying out each year. So, and I know we're having a couple measures on the ballot for increase of property tax for the Fire Protection District and a couple in Boulder County as well related to emergency services and fire. So that leaves the marijuana tax, and that, that doesn't provide, well, I guess if we had like a 10%, I think it would bring in a reasonable amount of, of money. So that's just my first take on all this. I do think that we need to do some more due diligence on our options for public safety, law enforcement, moving forward, looking at the Boulder County Sheriff's Office versus having our own department and looking at both the cost and the benefits of those two. That's it.
Jonathan?
I mean, from the public comments I read, a lot of it seems like there's a little bit of a misunderstanding of what's actually occurring as a town. And I believe it was pretty clear when I stated two weeks ago that we have a $4 million budget, that 2 million is funded by grants.
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred. Okay, so either way, that's one-third of a town budget funded by grants that are unsustainable. Generally, these grants have to be FEMA grants, DOLA grants, or grants that our town staff spends an enormous amount of time going after, doing work. It's not an effective way to run a town. And so that's my message is we go for all of this. We go for all three. And we take this out of the picture of the current crisis because this is town of Netherland. You have a crisis, everyone focuses on the current crisis and cannot take a step back to have an event horizon that is more than six months to two years. And if we had an event horizon of five to 10 years, we would not be in the situation we currently find ourselves in many different departments and lacking funds to repave school road, lacking funds to repay our visitor center, lacking funds to increase our water treatment plant, lacking funds to upgrade our ability to basically take more water, to exercise the water rights that we currently have. We don't have funds to continue as a town, and if you really take the time as a citizen to look at our master, our capital improvement plan, our master infrastructure plans, combine that with the comprehensive plan, combine that with Envision 2030, you're obviously not doing the math because you're asking to get a $10 million house and pay $150,000 for it. So reality is, is we put this to the voters, and if they want to vote no, I see comments that say, have you considered on incorporating and letting Boulder County handle it? If we don't get money, that's just the end result. So I would rather try to raise money as a town using all the options that we have and just put it out there. This, this is all public record. All of these reports are public record. All a citizen has to do is actually take the time to read it and stop yelling at the BOT.
Just to follow up on something that you said there, Jonathan, about the grants. You know, I, I've been looking at grants a lot lately from transportation, and there's quite a few available from like the Department of Transportation and Dr. Cog and a lot of different sources. And, and that's what municipalities and counties use to improve their, their infrastructure. So, so I think it's, it's, I, I would, I, I think, I would applaud that we're getting grants to, to work on our-
I'm not saying we should stop getting the grants. I'm saying we rely on the grants to run a town. And so if we don't get the grants, then we get into situations where we are not able to throw an extra 250,000, 300,000 at certain departments in a budget. And then crises come down the pike the next year outside of budgets, things like pandemics that are completely outside of our control. We don't have a sustainable budget enough to deal with the ebb and flow, especially being a front-range, small community in the urban wildland interface.
So we do have, we do have considerable balances in all of our accounts, so, so we can handle some ebb and flow.
Are you familiar with the requested amounts, the total, total number, total cost for our master infrastructure plan upgrades? Have you read those? Are you familiar with the timeline of when they should happen versus when we've pushed them back based upon even our best efforts to get the budget? We're still deferring things that really need to happen in the next two years to five years out. The more you defer, and we've been deferring for 10 years, the bigger the list gets. When the list gets to the point we are now, we're at a point where how are you supposed to do all of these things where statutorily you're required to do them? We don't get plans to upgrade our treatment plant. We get a book building moratorium. You get a building moratorium, then you lose other revenue sources because your building department is a massive revenue source for this town. So we don't have a plan and don't have the money to upgrade our wastewater treatment plant, no more building department, which means no more permits, no more pit fees, which means no more income for your local builders. We go elsewhere because we're going to get paid. Then if we're going down the hill to work, we're going to shop down the hill. That means less revenue coming into your businesses. We need to have a systems thinking. So I'm saying let's go for all three of these and let's not focus on the crisis. Let's focus on the impending crisis of we will incorporate in five years if we don't get our act together. There are also comments that we have the highest taxes in Boulder County. No, we don't. City of Boulder does. Look at it. So a lot of the comments that are here, one, are incorrect. As a BOT member, I believe it's your job to do your due diligence and actually know which one of those comments are incorrect, and we're not the ones making the decision here. We're saying we need more money. Here are the options. Marijuana tax, that's a no-brainer. Everyone in town's like, what? We're not doing that? Sales tax and property tax needs to be kept separate. What I see is the businesses would be fine to have an increase in sales tax, and fundamentally, the citizens are going to put up with it. The most you're going to get out of that is going to come, like I said last time, from the bars and from the restaurants, which largely are either folks that don't pay attention to the extra 3% of sales tax on their already $7 beer, or they're locals coming through town, or tourists coming through town, and it's our only way to actually get some of the money from tourists coming in. So I say let's go for all three of this, and the narrative of how we want to present this should be a big picture. It should be, yes, we're aware. The one comment on there, it said for 10 years, you've misallocated money and you're wondering what's happening now. That's the comment we should pay attention to because it's correct.
Tanya?
I agree with Jonathan for the most part. I think we need to go for all three and, and present it as- I think we need to go for all three, um, and, and present it as this is to fund town operations on all levels, for maintenance and for, uh, infrastructure improvements and department, salaries to keep and maintain staff so that we actually have a staff so that every department doesn't end up like the police department, where people are running out to get higher paying jobs elsewhere. So I think we need to do it, I think we need to just decide what numbers we want to go for. Personally, I would do a 1% on the sales tax, 8% on marijuana. And I'm not sure, um, how we measure the property tax, but there was some number given to us in the last meeting where, it was like an increase of $180 a year or something for a median average priced home. Um, and that seemed pretty reasonable to me. And I agree, we need to go for all three. And, um, regarding the comment about misallocating funds, well, how do we find out what's being misallocated? And stop that because we don't need to just be wasting money. So like, obviously we're all volunteers, I can't, and maybe I should be going through the budget with a fine tooth comb and questioning Miranda and the, everybody on every expense and everything, every line item. But I'm not going to do that. So who can we, can we, how can we find ways to save money in our budget? Because also that's really important, I think, to find out where are we misspending money? And that's a conversation, but.
It's a low question.
I'd like that to be a conversation we have soon.
Right, Rita?
I would like to speak to that.
Is your mic on?
Yes, so, can you hear me? Yeah, so we just, um, finished our 21 audit. And I did want to mention to you all that in the general fund for 21, there was an increase in fund balance of $300,000. And so in the two years I've been here and in 2020, the general fund increased by $230,000. So I'm not sure where the comment is coming from that we're misallocating funds. But, um, so that's really, I think, incredible, especially considering it was a COVID year, right?
Those are audited numbers.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
So that's just the general fund.
Okay.
So, um, I just wanted to make that comment. And of course it's public record. I mean, the audit has been posted, um, the budgets get posted. And you guys can see the line items there, actual compared to budget. So it's all out there, um, for everyone to see.
The, the general fund is our biggest, what are the other funds and where are they all audited?
Excuse me?
The other funds besides the general fund?
I'm not sure if I have, oh, do I?
Okay.
Oh, okay, I have the community center, um, increased 89,000 in 21.
Yep.
Street, 104,000. And that's all I have.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, every one of them, like Karen said, not just financials as of June, which is also great. The audit, the 21 audit, uh, all the funds have increased in balance.
Rita, is that, is that because those are funded through sales tax and sales tax revenue was higher?
Taxes is obviously, so another comment I wanted to make, sales tax in 21,
Yep.
increased 18 and a half percent over the prior year.
And that was up 20, 20 some percent the previous year? What was the previous year up?
Um, I, I don't, I don't think it was that much, but from 21 to 20, it was 18 and a half. And I'd say the year before, maybe 6%, I'm not sure on that.
Okay, gotcha.
But, um, what else was I going to say? Um, and then of course trustee Corvallin expenditures, you got to realize wages, for example, way low, right? Our expenditures, salaries, especially in 2020 when we had, um, what is it called, the stop when we had to pay less wages?
Right.
Some people had to, you know?
Yeah, this is not, this is not a business where we're supposed to make money.
No, exactly. So that's really what I'm thinking too. I mean, the last two years that I've done this, huge revenue increases.
Right, and I guess I just want to echo on that we were, and that was kind of a weird, but the instruction we got.
Clarify my statement of misallocation of funds. We're saying we have 350,000 sitting in our general account. How much do we gain on interest on that, 0.2%? What is inflation currently, 9%? Why are we not using it?
Exactly. And, and so the way that would work is a supplemental budget, right? We're going to come before you and we're going to ask to use some funds. And you're absolutely right, why aren't we using some of these funds?
So my comment had nothing to do with any fault of town staff. This was to the BOT, we're the ones who make the budget. You guys say, here's the audit, here's what this is, here's what you have. I'm saying misallocation of funds because it seems more important to have, we have to have taper in the account that I'm aware of. So is that 350, what do we have beyond taper?
Unencumbered?
Yes, which is what I have always asked, what is our unencumbered funds? Not what do we have in, in the actual bank account, but what is actually unencumbered of that?
Yep.
We have a lot of money that's, we haven't spent. I mean, like there was money from the Boulder County Housing Association that was given to us when I joined here two and a half years ago that we still haven't spent. And so I agree, we should be spending our money. But let's go back to the topic and I thank you Rita and, um, appreciate, and I'm psyched that we're, we're doing well and we should share that wealth with, um, our employees and by also, um, accomplishing some things for our community. But I, I think we should go for all three and those were my recommendations for how much we should I be asking.
Do, uh, point of order, do we need to decide tonight percentages?
No, so the deadline for the ballot language, I believe, is Thursday, September 9th. So you'd need to approve something that Wednesday evening before, but you have a board of trustees meeting Tuesday.
Right.
So really that's the deadline for deciding what percentage you want and what, um, what mill levy increase you want.
Great.
I think what would be most helpful for me in terms of finalizing language, because the percent, the percentage is just sticking that in the, in the resolution. And then use the percentage to figure out, you have to identify what the, the revenue increase will be for the town with that percentage. But the most helpful thing, and trustee Corvallin started to do that, is to identify what the money will be used for.
Right.
And whether you even want to include that in the ballot language. It doesn't need to be earmarking, doesn't need to be included in the ballot language, but sometimes that's what you're using to sell to the voters that this is why you should vote on this, this is why you should pass this.
Yeah. Uh, were you going to say something? Okay, great.
I do have a comment on that.
Go ahead.
So retail just seems, retail marijuana, that's a no brainer. That's just extra money to the coffers. So we say, we just, this is no brainer, that goes into general fund because it's just extra money.
If you're a marijuana retail staff, you might, you might feel otherwise.
Maybe, no, should go talk to them, that's my thought from the citizens. And then it comes down to sales tax should be basically earmarked for, I would say staffing, because that is our biggest source of revenue. If we're going to ask for property tax, we should earmark that toward infrastructure. People that live up here want to have functioning infrastructure, they want to be guaranteed that they have water, that they have roads and that. So if you're asking for an increase in property tax, give them something back, which is better services, better roads. If you're asking to increase sales tax, that's saying, hey, we need more money in our coffers. So you say we're increasing sales tax so that as a town, we have the ability to raise the rates of our staff.
Yep.
And then we'd simply just put the retail marijuana on there earmarked toward the commercial fund. That way, there's something folks can track. Sales tax will be paid by both town of Netherland residents and folks outside of town to provide us with more revenue to pay our staff more and better. So that we're not, one of the biggest places we're losing money is training folks. It takes five years as a return on investment to re, recoup the cost we put into anybody in streets, utilities, or police. If our average is two years for an employee, that means we haven't regained, we haven't gotten that return on investment for almost a decade. So when I'm talking about misallocation of funding, it's because you have funding to staff, but not enough to actually recoup the investment you're putting into training this staff. Instead, you're just training them up for the next county to grab them at a higher rate, which means you're losing money. So it's more than just what's in the audit, what's there. So my suggestion is go for the marijuana as simply increase the general fund. Ask for the property taxes earmarked specifically to infrastructure needs, reference the master infrastructure plan and the capital improvement plan. If folks actually read those, they're like, oh, holy crap. Then we go for the increase in sales tax specifically earmarked as the purpose is so that we can use that to increase staffing pay.
Okay. Board, uh, I'll start with Tanya, other thoughts? Or do you agree with what you just heard Jonathan suggest?
Yeah, I think that's really reasonable.
Okay, Karen?
Well, I, I'd like to actually, um, sit down with Rita, I think, and go over the budget to see, what, uh, where our operating expenses are going right now and, um, also take a look at the infrastructure costs. You know, I, I'm of the impression that, um, we, we shouldn't be, um, dipping into reserves for operating expenses and we should use the reserves for, for capital improvements and, um, planning. And I'd actually like us as a board to come up with a resolution at some point, um, deciding that, as well as coming up with, uh, focus areas for the next, um, for the remaining term of the, of the mayor, which is kind of related because that's, the budget is built around that. So, um, and not, you know, bringing, I mean, it's a good point, we're not saying we're going to raise taxes. What we're saying is we're going to the voters to ask them if they'd like to. But I, but as a trustee, I do want to delve into the budget a bit more to, um, prove to myself that we need to do this.
Thanks. Rita and Miranda, looking ahead, what does the budget season look like? What, what are critical dates that we're going to have to hit?
So we'll start work sessions with you all on the budget in September, like we did last year, which is really just us talking about like broad scale CIP projects.
Right.
Um, and then we really hit the budget, public meetings in October, November, with ideally an adoption in November, if not early, first meeting in December.
And trustee Blakemore wants to get started in August. We've got audited financial statements, we can start to do that right away, right?
So yeah, right, and we are going to bring you a supplemental budget though on August 16th. That is a, a separate, of course, from the 2023 budget. That's going to be for line items that need, um, adjustments, you know, specifically we're looking like direct discharge LLC, the Boulder County Sheriff's Office, and, and those areas that we've had to spend more. And we are also going to propose a cost of living increase for all staff.
Okay, great, I think that's the right order.
You know, I, I was just thinking today how I'd like to look at, um, salaries, wages, cost of living, ev- every year when we're doing the budget.
Yeah, and so I think that that's, you know, we do, generally we do a cost of living increase plus a merit. So like last year was a four, nope, 2% cost of living, 4% merit. Um, and I feel like the year before that, something similar. Uh, but we are going to ask really for that kind of similar breakdown mid-year now, just to get people back in line with where they should be. But I do agree that we need to do an assessment of kind of where we are with our neighbors and where we are with general just cost of living. And are we keep, are we staying competitive?
Just one comment on that percentages, cost of living, okay, so max 6% increase in your salary over last year. And we're at 9% inflation, which means you're actually 3% down from your salary last year. So something to keep in mind also as a trustee.
So a lot of staff members did receive increases, um, and kind of recognition of some of the changes. So, um, public works in the police department. And so it's really, we, we are going to come kind of with a proposal of cost of living because some people did get adjusted, not based on just a percentage, but just flat dollars. And then you've got other staff members though, like community center and the administration team that did not receive anything. And so we want to make sure that across the board, we're compensating correctly of those who didn't, plus those who did, who should still get some sort of COLA increase.
Don't forget your board of trustees, I want 60 bucks a month.
Appreciate all that, thank you town staff.
Can I, can I make one comment really quick about the sales tax revenue? Rita mentioned that there was a, a significant increase in 2021, about 19%. 18 and a half percent. And a large part of that is likely due to a Supreme Court case that came out. Um, that was Wayfair, um, I think it was Wayfair versus South Dakota. And it allowed, um, collection of sales tax requires remote sellers, Amazon, to collect sales tax, um, and then remit it to the state of Colorado. And so that's, that's likely where you're getting the huge jump, um, that year is because of that decision.
Yeah, that's an artificial bump.
Well, it, it'll, it'll continue.
Sure will, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's not that, uh, our businesses are doing necessarily that much better.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, because as of June, as I mentioned last time, June, as of June's financial sales tax, we're about the same as we were at last year. But 11% higher than budgeted at June. So, just wanted to let you know that again.
We've got, uh, board members, if you, you don't object, we've got one member in the audience, Kayla, do you want to say anything on this issue? You do, great, uh, can you, come on up?
Kayla Evans, 1250 Eldora Road, um, thank you for letting me come. I.
We almost had you locked out.
Guys sit here without somebody being in the audience, so it's like, kind of pathetic. So I, I, because I came in a little late, I apologize. Two thoughts I had, Jonathan, I love your idea about when you do training and you invest in people and then they turn around and leave. Is there any way contractually that you can obligate people if you are going to, if we're going to send you for this training, you have to sign a contract to work for us for X number of years? And if you decide to break that, that whatever we paid you for your training, you have to reimburse the town if you're going to leave before that time period is up? Can you legally do that?
You can, but it's not easy and, you know, you're.
Well, it, I understand, I just, maybe would incentivize people to actually commit to staying here a little bit longer, just an idea. And the other thing is, um, you know, we're talking about taxes and raising taxes and the money that you will have to spend to pay for all the things you're doing. What, what's going on with the money that the DDA has? And why can't they chip in on some of the projects? Because if you remember the DDA, your taxes got frozen at a certain point and everything above that they get. Well, but what are they, the business community, doing with that? That's a chunk of change they've got. So maybe there are projects in the community that they can take over the, the paying of. And because those are really taxes that came into this community that should be working for the community that are sitting in the bank, that the businesses are not using to enhance services that the town is doing for them.
Good.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
I guess, uh, but.
So it's, it's either a question in a statement.
Yeah, Rita, uh, just while Kayla's still here, what, what is the DDA balance right now? Just so we have a, a point of reference. Yeah.
Mother.
Okay.
Around 870,000, give or take, but that's a guess of mine.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't do their books, so.
Miranda, do you know anything more?
No.
Okay. Good point though. Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you. You guys are awesome.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Tanya, did you have a question?
Uh, no, um, it is interesting about the DVA, I know they, they have a lot of projects in the works. But they always have a huge balance. I am, I question what Karen was saying, that we should be using our balance to be funding infrastructure stuff. But don't we want to keep some as a cushion?
And, yeah, that's true. And then we, uh, we do have a limitation that DDA taxes in a certain geographic limit and the project's spending is supposed to stay in those geographic limits.
Yeah, but that's town, that's like downtown business, so that, that could be justified for many expenses, but. Well, it's just something to think about, like how, like maybe if the board of trustees or town staff had a request to send to the DDA, then.
Right.
If, if that would help take the load off our budget, then it could get brought over to them. I'm sure that they're really pretty reasonable over there.
Tanya, I know it's unfair, but you are the liaison, board liaison to the DDA. If you were going to channel Barbara Hart right now, what would you say?
Well, I can't channel somebody else, I wouldn't. Well, I can't channel somebody else. I wouldn't want to do that. I, I can't speak for Barbara Hart at all. I, I wouldn't want, but I, I think that like if as a liaison, if if we as a board could come up with something to take off our budget and try to give it to them.
Right.
I could bring it over to them. Um, you know, when we're doing our budget and see if that's something they could absorb. Um.
Okay.
But I don't have a specific thought right now as to what that would be.
I know from working with being their liaison last year during budget season, there are limitations to the ways that the DDA can help out. Uh, largely, there are some projects that the business owners feel are very much a benefit to them, such as the public art and the wayfinding, which are the main ones working right now. However, they are working and helping us address some of the infrastructure traffic issues over on Big Springs. That has been a long project in going because it was the first attempt by this town to have a public-private kind of project. And as we found, that has a lot of hiccups and hurdles, but is on its way going right now. I believe they have committed to funds for all of our projects, uh, from the sidewalks that was brought forth by Public Works to the traffic improvement projects that happened that were brought forth by Public Works for Jeffco. They have, I believe, also agreed to potentially cede the funds for any paid parking project that were to happen in town, which would mean they would be paying for that, not coming out of our general fund. Other ways that the DDA had attempted to help out with staffing and budget issues when it came to the police department was allocating thirty thousand funds for traffic control from the DDA. So that the DDA was paying for the off-duty police officers, the mountain rangers, and any extra shift officers that we had. That was at least the intent. So that, that fund, that was the only way that the DDA could try to kick some money into the police department, because the DDA currently kicks money into the fire pit protection district, and there was a feeling that they should be doing more. But they are limited by Tabor. They are limited by using those tax, tax funds in their district. And it was determined that they could use it for traffic control, extra policing during events within their district. So they are very creative about how they can do this. However, they are their own board with their own lawyer and their own budget. And it's a matter of this board aligning and having clear, concrete goals to take to the DDA and a narrative in such a way that you can convince the business owners who sit on that board that it is a benefit to their town and their business. Fundamentally, the issue that yes, they do take a large chunk of change out of our potential tax revenue. Yes, that's an argument. That's a discussion to be had, but fundamentally, they are also basically our seed money for every grant we have went at from DOLA to FEMA for all of our capital improvement projects. And I believe the intent of previous administrations was that DDA would provide this, the seed funds for capital improvement projects and infrastructure, so long as it was within the CBD, which largely everyone in town knows is where we need our main infrastructure.
Okay, thanks. Um.
Yeah.
Tanya, is that you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say the, the putting down infrastructure for paid parking is gonna be a financial benefit to our town once it's set up. I mean, more than some of these
True.
Taxes that we've got here, you know, so that's something that we should afford as soon as possible. And I thought there was gonna be something like that on the agenda coming up.
That's uh, next, the next meeting that's currently, yeah.
Good. Okay.
Said, I, you don't have to channel Barb Hart, because she is communicating with me right now. She says the, the the um, DDA has not agreed to pay for anything to do with parking. Um, and only one member of the board has asked about that, so it's, it's premature to be talking about it here.
Thank you for correcting me, Barb.
Okay, well, that could be something we could bring up while they're doing their budget here. We just, we just did like a prelim last meeting, so um, maybe that, that could be something I could bring up if they would be willing to put down some of the infrastructure for those kiosks.
Okay.
Mayor Protemo, do you have quite a few people online who want to give public comment?
I, there's one that just popped up. Uh, her name is Barb Hart.
Well, and I, I wouldn't say that she's first in line. Sorry, Barb.
No, how, how long do we have?
Uh, so I know of three and then would become Barb.
And what's the order?
So we'll start with Rich Orman.
And then, after Rich, who's?
Uh, then it would be Kathleen Chippai, if she was able to call in.
Great. And then, okay, go ahead. Uh, Rich, are you there?
I am. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I appreciate it. My name is Rich Orman. I am a Netherlands resident since January. I'm on the SAB. I've been following what's been going on in town mostly by Facebook, net heads. There's this group called Save the Netherlands Police Department. And it seemed to me that all of the talk around town regarding increases in taxes had to do with this idea of saving the police department, because we can't afford to pay front-range salaries based on our current budget to maintain the staffing that we would need to really have a viable police department. But uh, in listening to the meeting tonight, it's really more along the lines of asking the voters to raise taxes simply because town needs the money in a sort of a general sense. You know, I, all, all I can say is looking at this as a voter getting a ballot in November, I would be much more inclined to vote on a tax increase if I knew exactly what the money was going to be spent on. And the police department would be something important to me. I, I had a very long career as a prosecutor, so I know a little bit about law enforcement uh, versus just the town needs money. Um, you know, if it's just the town needs money, me as a taxpayer is thinking how they haven't really demonstrated how they can't save money elsewhere. Um, if the police department is a priority, and I think it should be, I think the town really needs to go to the voters and say, you, if you want to have a police department, this is what it's gonna cost versus having Boulder County Sheriff contract with us, and this is what you get. And, you know, I haven't really heard anything about why, why Boulder County Sheriff's Department couldn't provide Netherlands with uh decent, acceptable limits, you know, of policing in our town. Maybe they could, maybe they couldn't. I think I read something in one of the agendas that the town board, in fact, wanted to hear from someone in the command staff at the sheriff's office as to what they could provide. So all, all I can say is, me as just a voter, you know, I would want to hear from you guys as to really what the money was gonna be spent on, the police department being a very important part of that. But I also really think you should present us with alternatives. If you don't pass this tax increase for the police department, this is what you're gonna get. And, you know, it, it could be what we're gonna get is, is acceptable and, and not worth the tax increase. Also, I would note, one of you mentioned inflation, which is very high right now. If you raised our sales tax by four percent, well, you've just raised the inflation rate in Netherlands from nine percent to thirteen percent. And wages haven't caught up with inflation. So you've just given all the people that work in Netherlands
You still there, Rich?
All I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Rich, um, I don't know if you're seeing the timer, but you stayed right within it. Thank you. The perspective is good, but if I hear you right, what you're asking is, or what you're suggesting is, if we do go for any of the tax increases, that they should be earmarked so that people can identify what they're paying for, right?
That's correct, Mayor Protem. I mean, I think if you look at like when Boulder County proposed an increase, they're usually pretty small, and they're usually, this increase is for this specific thing. Right? So you can look at it and say, oh, I agree with that specific thing. I'm gonna vote for this. Or, you know, I don't think that specific thing is really worth this amount of money to me. Um, so that's what I have to say on that.
Appreciate it. Uh, board, before Rich goes, uh, any clarifying questions?
Thank you, Rich. I really appreciated um your comments. They make a lot of sense and um I agree with them.
Tanya, Jonathan? Okay, Jonathan's good. Tanya?
Well, I also agree that the more specific we get, the better. Um, but I, the problem with the police department specifically right now is that we can't wait till November to make a decision. And so I think the whole point of raising funds for the general fund and for town staffing is that so we don't end up in another situation where we're about to lose a department because we don't have the funding already in place. And this is meant to be some sort of cushion so that we can shore up every department that runs this town. And of course, the police department is a very important department, but so is our water department, et cetera, et cetera. And um, that's, that's one of the main objectives is to uh financially secure ourselves so that our infrastructure and our pay, paid staff can be up to par with the other counties. We don't lose department heads left and right. But that's what I'm thinking myself, and I can't speak for the rest of the board.
Much appreciated. Um, thanks, Rich. Appreciate it.
Uh, Kathleen Chippai, and if you're still on, I may have muted you. Use a star six to unmute.
You there, Kathleen?
If Kathleen is unable to call in, um, this is Macy Calagaris, and I can read her comment into the record. She sent it to me via email.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll give her a second, though, just to see if she's online.
Okay. So you're gonna read the comment into the record, and if she gets, if she can dial in successfully, she'll finish it?
Um, if she can dial in successfully, she will give the comment, and if she cannot get in, I will read it on her behalf.
Okay. Kathleen, we'll try again.
I don't hear her. Um, so I'll go ahead and read the comment she sent to me via email.
Please.
I support everything Jonathan said, especially that grants are not sustainable. And this is not this BOT's fault. This is the last two decades of mismanagement and older boards kicking the can down the road. Time to get realistic and pay the piper. I support increased tax revenue. Businesses collect it from customers and pay it to the code, to the Colorado Department of Revenue, and they pass it to Netherlands. Businesses do not pay this out of pocket. Most sales come from tourists, so other people bring money being brought into our town. So other people's money being brought into our town. I think this is the best option for the locals who can't afford property tax increases. I'm not sure where Netherlands can find two million or more yearly that is necessary for the Netherlands Police Department to survive versus the seven hundred and fifty thousand for a yearly twenty-four-seven policing contract. But I am interested in anyone else's ideas on how this can be accomplished. I will add that on Sunday evening, Netherlands Police Department understandably off for the weekend since Jen cannot work fourteen hours every day. I was assaulted in my storefront by a local and I called Boulder County Dispatch for the emergency situation. To my ever-thinkful surprise, two Boulder County officers, Pete and Steve, arrived in minutes and non-aggressively ended the emergency situation. If they had not arrived as immediately as they had, the situation was in the process of becoming more physical than it was and would have been and would have had a more grave ending. I am not saying this would not have ended in the same way had Netherlands Police Department been on to respond, but because I was so thankful for Boulder County's quick response. I will add I was concerned that the individual was not arrested on the spot and left to leave on their own free will with a court summons as I was then afraid to leave for the night in fear of further incident, fear of further incident on my business or myself. I have since learned the person who assaulted me has known mental instability on occasion, and Boulder County was pretty kind to that person's circumstance, even while being verbally, verbally abused themselves. So it wasn't some aggressive take-down of the assailant, which is what I heard people in last week's Board of Trustees meeting voice in fear would occur. But for those doubting Boulder County's response time, they were there in minutes, and they said if they were contracted twenty-four-seven, this would be an example of how things would be in the future. I was also told Lions and Superior tried to save their municipal policing like Netherlands is currently, and now that they have contracted Boulder County, they are very pleased with local policing. Um, and then I would just like to reiterate for the record that that was a comment from Kathleen Chippai, a thirty-one-year East Magnolia resident and nineteen-year business owner. Thank you.
Kathleen, are you there now? Um, whether you can hear or not, thanks for your input. It's really appreciated. Um, and at some point, you and I will talk about the sales tax in particular as a brick-and-mortar downtown business owner.
Uh, next would be Melody Baumhofer.
I'd, I'd like to make a real quick um correction on something that Kathleen said. She, she said, um, uh, we needed um two million dollars um to support a local police department. And looking at the budget that Rita prepared for this packet, um, in this item, it's um one point two million.
Good. Okay, thanks for the input.
Melody Baumhofer.
Ovi?
Hello, Melody Baumhofer, Netherlands resident. Um, before I give my comment, I'm wondering if I can read Chelsea La Forge's comment into the record?
Uh, can you do it inside of three minutes?
I will read and then tell me when to stop.
Go ahead.
Uh, so this is from Chelsea La Forge, owner of The Mountain Neighbor. Uh, to whom it may concern, my name is Chelsea La Forge. I am a resident and business owner in Netherlands. I am voicing my support, support for doing whatever it takes to keep a local police department active and available to the Netherlands community. Marshall Fine Levin personally helped me with a difficult situation when the business connection was open. A non-local transient was outside of the store yelling and screaming violent obscenities at passerby. I was alone in the store and I did not feel safe approaching him. I called the Netherlands PD. Officer Fine Levin responded within minutes. She handled the situation with absolute professionalism, compassion for the individual, and grace. I can't even imagine begin, I can't even begin to imagine what might have happened or how the situation would have been exacerbated without the local Netherlands police nearby, or if I had to wait on the Boulder County Sheriff's Department to respond instead. Netherlands has enough activity from both locals and visitors to warrant a need for our local police department to remain available to our community. Tourism keeps our town busy throughout every season. The Netherlands police have a history of getting to know us and our community on both a personal and professional level. This is something that the Boko Sheriff's Department will not and cannot provide since they do not spend their time in our local area. I'm also very concerned about what their response time might be and the repercussions of that. Marshall Fine Levin needs our support, and she needs it now. This issue cannot wait or be delayed any further. Something must be done soon to help keep our police department operating. I understand that the BOT has been discussing this long-term funding solution, but what about today? What are you doing to help us now? Marshall Fine Levin is bearing the weight every moment that this issue is delayed. If we lose our Marshall, what happens then? Marshall has been clear about her needs, and I've heard that the BOT has pushed this critical issue off the agenda twice now. Why isn't it on the agenda today? Why is the BOT waiting for a conference with legal counsel to receive legal advice and to consider a determined positions relative to an employment agreement? How long will this take? What actions are you taking in this moment to show that you want to keep Marshall Fine Levin and the Netherlands Police Department operational? Delaying this critical issue is not a good way to show the Marshall that you hear her or that you care. Frankly, I'm appalled to hear that such a wonderful officer and community member is, in general, is being put on the back burner. What sort of message do you feel this is sending her? We cannot afford to lose Marshall Fine Levin, period. Forcing your support for the local PD is one thing, taking action is another. I would like to know exactly what immediate actions are being taken by the Netherlands BOT to protect our police department. The residents of Netherlands deserve to know what is going on. I expect more from our BOT. I expect honesty and transparency. If there is an issue, personnel or otherwise, that is causing any sort of delay, we need to know, and there should be no reason that you can't explain the situation to us. Please do not our, allow our police department to fall apart because of your own inaction. Please do not subject our community residents and visitors to longer police response times by forcing us to deal with the disconnected officers from the Boko Sheriff's Department. Netherlands deserves better than that.
Well done. You have a, a career as an auctioneer. Uh, we got the letter late today. Um, it would have been in the packet, uh, but it came in after that. Um, I responded to her immediately and picked up the phone and talked with her right after that. Um, so uh, we addressed the issue of dodging and, and hiding. Um, I think to her satisfaction, I think she's, her input is super important. It's acknowledged. I'm glad you read it into the record, because it isn't in the packet right now. Um, but I made sure that she knew uh that herself, uh, and you, and the many others that have written in, um, are being responded to, each and every one of them. Um, in many cases with sit-down um discussions that follow what I've written to them already. discussions that follow what I've written to them already. So I appreciate your bringing it to us, Melody. Thanks.
I'd like to read Chelsea's reply to your communication with her. She says, "Hi, Tom. Thank you so much for writing me back and for taking the time to discuss this on the phone with me. With so much mixed information, I sincerely appreciate the clarifications you were able to provide. I appreciate the dedication that you are showing on this issue. If there is anything I can do to help, please let me know. This is a very important issue, and I would like to help in any way I can. All the best. Chelsea La Forge."
Thanks for, I hadn't seen that yet. And thank you for doing what you did for her and for everybody. I understand that we have five felony cases to deal with. Okay.
So I believe Melody Baumhofer wanted to give her own comment in addition to reading that one into the record.
Go ahead, Melody.
Thank you. Melody Baumhofer, Netherlands resident. So I agree in raising sales tax. I would like everybody to know that the Boulder County sales tax is 4.99% currently, and they are asking for it to increase, like Rich said, by a small amount, again, on this same ballot. And then we have a special district tax of about 1%. The Netherlands city tax is 4%, which means that Boulder County is getting more from our taxpayers than we are. And I would support an increase to match the Boulder County tax rate, if not go higher. And I would also urge town staff and/or the BOT to research other areas and see are counties in other areas receiving higher sales tax rates than municipalities? And if that's different in other areas, why? Second, I would agree with the marijuana tax. And I also agree with Trustee Baumhofer that said that relying on grants for our town budget is unsustainable. I would also comment to Trustee Blakemore that as far as keeping money in reserves for planning, we have a lot of plans that have never had action done on them. There are certain plans that action is going forward on finally, but it's a longstanding issue with the voters, whether or not it's the reality right now. The voters will tell you we have a lot of plans and no action. So I would urge you to really consider what your voters are telling you. And lastly, I still want to urge that we can talk about all the midterm and long-term solutions we want. If we don't have short-term action now, then we don't have a police department to long-term plan for. I also agree with Tanya that we need to continue looking at long-term living wage salaries for the rest of our departments so we don't have what happened at, you know, utilities or whatever, and now it's happening at the police department, where we lose everybody all at once. We cannot absorb that type of crisis. And lastly, I really do think that Officer Fineleven is the most fantastic police officer I've ever met. And we need to do absolutely everything that we can to support her now, as well as in the midterm and as well as in the long term. I understand that the short-term issue is considered a staff decision. And I think right now, in a crisis, the POT needs to take over the normal realm of operation and do something. So thank you for your time, and I am done.
Thanks. Thanks for that. It's a really important perspective. And I appreciate your input.
Barbara Hart.
Barbara Hart, your floor.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions.
Identify yourself first.
Barbara Hart, 245 Apollo Drive, business owner at 20 East Lakeview Drive with two businesses in Netherlands. I'm also on the DDA. I had a, one question I had, because I heard this come up just a couple of comments ago, and I'm trying to take notes, but I can't write fast enough. So if there is a personnel issue at the MPD, my belief is that that is not subject to public scrutiny. And I would ask Jennifer Madsen, Attorney Madsen, to speak to that because people are saying everyone needs to know everything that's going on, and I'm not sure that that is 100% the case. So can Attorney Madsen address that? I think there's a lot of misinformation going around, and part of that misinformation that's being shared is that there are personnel issues, among other things, at the police department, and I think that there are some things that are protected in the police department or in any department in town for any employee. That's my question.
I bet you understand the question, but Karen has a question.
Maybe we can just speak to the purpose of executive sessions.
Well, no, I don't think that's what she's asking. But if you would like me to, if the board would like me to respond, I will respond.
Please.
So personnel matters are generally confidential. Under QARA, personnel files are confidential. It's, you know, those are things that aren't meant to be part of the public purview. So yes.
Understood.
Under Colorado law, they are typically confidential.
But QARA requestable?
No, they are not.
No, not executive sessions. Right.
No, QARA, any personnel files are not subject to QARA. You cannot get a personnel file.
Understood. Okay.
Okay, thank you. That clarified my first question. My second is just a point that, and I brought this up last time I was at the meeting on, last week, is that raising taxes, I don't think any business voted against raising taxes, but the percentage of taxes will affect us as businesses. And many of us don't sell things that are, you know, scarves or hats or other things that maybe you can say, hey, it's no big deal for us to take another 1% on this. We're in business, and we are going against other businesses, and if we add a high percentage, it's going to hurt all of us as businesses, including the restaurants that you want to tax more for selling beer or whatever, because they're having the same struggles all of us are having with staffing. So I would ask you to please, before you decide on a percentage, gauge the business community further to understand what they can or cannot support as businesses in the community. And also to remember that many, many businesses in Netherlands are not owned by people in Netherlands, so we have no vote. I have no vote on whether you raise the taxes in my business because I can't afford to live in Netherlands. I live in Gilpin County. And that is a lot of people that own businesses in town. They don't live in town proper and cannot vote on this. So please make sure to get the information out to the businesses so that they can have input on whether or not they can support that type of tax increase. Nobody's saying they can't afford a tax increase, but talk to them about what they can afford.
That's a really good point, Barb. Maybe as we get down, go down this funnel, we can work with you on getting, going in deeper with your membership on what they think they can stomach.
Absolutely. As the DDA and through the paper as well, I'm happy to put the information out there. I've spoken with over 40 business owners in the last week. So there are people that want to talk about this, but giving them a couple of days' time is not enough time to come up with any actual information from any of them.
It's not that tight. I think we've got a little time. Thank goodness to staff for moving this along. But it's something that you and I should talk about during our weekly get-together, where we go next.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Jonathan?
So just to clarify the request, you were asking that we reach out to business owners so that business owners can tell us what they think their customers are willing to pay in terms of a sales tax increase, because, you know, the businesses aren't actually the one paying it. It's the customers that come in that utilize their business.
Correct. And I'm hearing a couple of things. I'm hearing things like, we are mostly tourists. We are not. We are a local store that has local customers that have students in the schools that will go to Amazon to buy their instrument instead of buying it at a local store because you're going to tax it out of what they can afford.
We're taxing Amazon as well right now. So Amazon's going to get this sales increase tax as well.
Okay, but you're, you're, we're already trying to provide something that you're more for, and people are not going to shop locally for that specific item or for those specific items. So I'm just asking to please talk to the businesses about this. Everyone that I have talked to is like, yes, we probably have to have some kind of sales tax increase, but talk to them about what that looks like for them. That's it.
Makes sense.
That makes sense. Appreciate it.
So and as far as Amazon receiving the tax, it's only if item is being shipped to Netherlands. You know, if you live in Gilpin County, you won't hit that tax.
Good point.
Correct. We don't ship, so we ship very specific things. When someone comes into the store, buys it, and pays a sales tax and a shipping fee on it, we pay the Netherlands sales tax fee on that. We don't ship through Amazon. We don't sell through Amazon.
Much appreciated, Barb. That's a really good point from a real business owner's perspective that we had, that we needed to hear tonight. Essentially, what we need to discuss is we need to get some guidance at this point on where we stand. I think we're hearing that we, correct me, Board, if I'm wrong, but we want to look at all these options. We're going to need to give some guidance pretty soon by September 9th, right, on percentage? And if we're going to tie it to a specific purpose? Yes?
Right. I can, I can put together what I've heard tonight. I don't know if there is consensus, but I can start to put together what I've heard tonight, bring it back for, if you want, for the 16th in a resolution form. This is not, this was just the language of the ballot. So put it in a resolution form.
Right.
And then you can look at it again and make revisions, and we can bring it back again.
Let's do that.
You still have more public comment. I just want to...
Yeah, before we go on, I wanted to make one point to some folks that have spoken already. A previous packet includes all this, number one, the perspective, what others are charging. Number two, what different tax rates will bring in. And I really applaud staff for putting that together. It was extraordinarily helpful. And I say, go back and take a look at that. If you feel that it's not representative, we can go further, but a lot of the homework is done already. So read it, if you would. Kayla, come on up.
Well, you have other public comment. I would recommend you not, sorry, Kayla.
How many are?
Right now, you have one person who raised their hand, but you do have a couple of call-in users. So I think it's James Maul.
Go ahead.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. Thank you. My name is James Maul. I'm a resident of Netherlands. I guess I don't understand why Airbnb and short-term rentals have been taken off the table. And when they're taxed $2 on a room, that's absurd, especially how much of our businesses that produce amazing goods, amazing foods, how much of the tax burden that they're taking on. Airbnb, it's only an investment. The only reason that they're making money is because they're in a beautiful place, a beautiful community that people want to visit. $2 is absolutely absurd. It should be 10%, 15%, 20% on what their total sale is. It shouldn't be $2. It should be $20. And just to add on to that, and what a detriment that Airbnb is to our community, I get pushback that Airbnb is regulated in Netherlands, so it's taken care of. But that's obviously not true. There's a website called airdna.co that you can go to, register for free. Look at the information on Airbnbs in the area. There's 88 active rentals. If we go to the U.S. Census Bureau, it lists 850 total housing units in Netherlands. So you have approximately 10% of the housing taken up by Airbnbs. Another great thing about that site is that you can click on each one of these Airbnbs and see how many nights are listed. So just clicking on a few here, 302 nights, 328 nights, 12, that's good. 274, 295, 365, 221, 61, 262. Obviously, these aren't just short-term rentals. These are permanent rentals that are taking housing stock away from the community. They're taking resources away from the community. They're taking money away from the community. And there is no tax that they pay. $2 a night is ridiculous.
Okay, that's a perspective that I appreciate. And it should go to Airbnb.co, right?
It's airdna.co.
DNA. Okay, got it. Board, what say you?
Appreciate the comments and that perspective. The reason we don't charge a percentage is because it's a statutory town. We cannot charge a percentage. We can charge a flat fee. It was decided as $2 an hour or $2 per room per night based upon the, I don't know, six months of 40 individuals sitting here two years ago when we negotiated this, and it resulted in a special election, a recall election, and a real big mess. So I appreciate all those comments. We have looked at this. The determination was essentially the amount of money we could gain from an STR would be hindered by then having to hire an outside contractor or organization or then allocate more staff time that they don't have to try to track these things. Now, that new website you just gave us, that would be really appreciated to go up against Venmo, VRBNB, and all of the other potential websites. But reality is, we were the first town to actually regulate STRs. We did regulate it pretty strongly. Boulder County took our language. Kudos to Miranda, Attorney Madsen, for working very hard on that, adjusted a few things. Lions then took it. Crestaboot then took it. It's been a long process, and as soon as Town of Netherlands and these other municipalities adjusted to try to regulate STRs, they jumped onto different platforms. So it's kind of a cat and mouse game right now. If your municipality is recognizing that we need to be taxing these folks, whether that is at a lodging fee or a flat rate. And it is a very long-term discussion that I appreciate that, but there are good reasons. And if you go back two years and you review those packets and you review the discussion with the STR owners, you might have a little bit better understanding of why at this juncture, we are not taking that step. Also, the work session two weeks ago, we did say as a board, once we're through this, we would like to look at that potentially for next year. That's at least what I remember. Correct me, rest of Board if I'm wrong.
Is that something that has to go to the ballot to change that tax?
Yes.
It does?
Yes, occupation tax does have to go to the ballot.
And...
And it did a couple of years ago.
And what happened then?
It passed.
Okay. And if I, the 88 is shocking to me because essentially that would indicate that north of 10% of our homes are being rented out that way. Is that accurate? We're self-reporting, so we don't know, but what are you finding?
Right. So we have 37 registered short-term rentals. I would caution, you know, when just taking Netherlands, it's going to include Boulder County Incorporated typically. There are. We're not going to say that there's not Airbnbs that we learn about every once in a while. And, you know, maybe it's the police department that tells us, and we have to go hunt them down. But yeah, right now, as of self-reported, Airbnbs or short-term rentals, it's about 37.
Okay. Knowing that, number one, it's self-reporting, and number two, that we're probably undertaxing them. And number three, that when we looked at this last time, I think in the worksheet, we found that it was almost immaterial what we could do with this number of units, right? Is it a viable taxing source? I think there's a policy, a bigger policy issue that if indeed more than 10% of our homes are now going down this area, that would account for some of our shortage of affordable housing. But that's a longer discussion on a different night.
So Miranda, I thought we had an agency that we worked with to track Airbnbs.
It's host compliance, and so we're also able to pull transaction records from there as well to see, you know, if there's active rentals that haven't registered. And so we're able to do that as well, which is oftentimes where our communication comes from. But as of the last time I looked, all of the currently active rentals were registered short-term rentals. Now, there's one thing, so I just want to confirm that that goes through, like, traditional hosting sites. We will do all sorts of things, you know, and host compliance can only do so much for us. It can basically just talk, grab hits as they come through. But it is, I think it's a very useful tool for what we're striving for here.
And the other thing I wanted to say is that Airbnbs in Netherlands have to be on your primary residence property. So the whole...
Yes and no. So the only current available license types are primary resident and there's two versions, host present, host not present, different amount of days for each, and then a class C license, which is industrial, general, commercial and CBD. As of September 16th, 2019, there were two other license types, which was your secondary home or an ADU. So we do have some of those that registered back then, but that is no longer a current license type allowed.
Yeah. So, um, and those do phase out when, um, the property is sold.
Correct. Those are not transferable licenses. So when someone lets their class A or B go, you cannot get it again.
Yeah, but, but, um, outside of this CBD industrial area, um, there can be whole house, um, short-term rentals, just like we have a lot of motels and hotels there. Um, but in, in the residential areas, it has to be on your, the property that you live on. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. So as far as losing housing stock, um, uh, it, it's not the whole house that you're using in, in the residential areas.
Um, Tanya, we haven't heard from you for a while. Anything to add? Question?
Uh, no, I just wanna agree with what Jonathan had said that, um, we had said that this is a bigger discussion and that, I mean, I personally have a couple revisions to the code that I think might help be more enforceable. Um, and I, I think this is not the time for this conversation. I think we talked about the, how much possibly we could earn if we added a dollar or $2. It's on, it's on that agenda from two weeks ago. All of that's in there and was like, you know, another $30,000. It's not gonna be enough to save anything. So we figured let's just pick, let's do this later when we have time to do a lot of revisions and, um, come up with a system that's can be better enforced. Cause obviously right now it's, it's not very well enforced. We all know that there are quite a few Airbnbs that aren't following the rules or whatever that we've made. So that's what I think right now is not the time for this conversation.
Okay. Thanks, Tanya. We're gonna.
So we do have some call-in users that I had to mute. And so it would be star six to unmute yourself if you'd like to give a public comment. I can't tell. They can't raise their hands. So they would have to just choose to unmute themselves or not.
Uh, who wants to go first? Uh, star six to unmute?
Okay. Doesn't look like you have any other public comment.
But then while you guys, um.
Oh, Paul, just raise hand.
I didn't, uh, you said.
Yes, hello.
Hello there.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Can you identify yourself, please?
Yeah. My name is, uh, Paul Correll. I live in unincorporated Boulder County, up off of Hurricane Hill, just outside the town limits. So, um, I spoke last, or a week or so ago, I'm, uh, the former town marshal. And I, I'm listening again tonight because I find this, uh, this conversation fascinating. And what I, I did want to answer a couple co- uh, questions that popped up. You know, has anything been explored for a specific law enforcement tax? That is earmarked specifically for funding your police department. That is a standard, uh, funding mechanic, mechanism that other agencies have used across the country. Um, and I don't know if that can be explored. Additionally, um, what I want to finish up with is running a police department is so much more than just the pay. I think you're finding out that, that, um, you could increase their pay to $100,000 a year. But if you don't provide the young officers a full package per se, uh, for a career plan, for their family plan, for their retirement and such, um, they will still continue to pursue other opportunities. They are no different than any of you all with your past careers and how you moved through your careers. So as you move forward with whatever program you decide to do, I would just, um, ask that you continue to look at approaching your police department as running it as a business. Um, you know, they have to have agency support. They have to have community support, government support. They have to have support for their career. They have to have the work-life balance. They have to have specific benefits that they can look forward to, a specific retirement program they can look forward to. They have to have quality equipment and quality training that keeps them current in the law enforcement world. Opportunities within their own community, opportunities for their family within the community, meaning housing, uh, activities, things like that. And then they, they need to be proud of their own agency, their own organization, their own community and how that status is perceived in the rest of the law enforcement world. So, you know, there, there's so much more to this than just giving the men and women of law enforcement more pay. I, I hope that you can find that money. I hope you can get a tax to do that. But at the end of the day, you need to put together a full package very similar to what the Boulder County Sheriff's Department does for their deputies. And that's why they can keep them for 20 years through retirement, where smaller communities may find it a little more challenging. Thank you for your time.
Paul, thanks a lot. You forgot to mention a building, but you got that.
Yeah, I did mention that last time. Thank you, uh, Mayor.
Um, Board, any, any questions, comments?
I, can I, am I allowed to say something quickly?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I just wanna let, uh, Mr. Correll know that I did write a four-year strategic plan for the Netherlands Police Department that, um, I shared with Administrator Fisher, and it does incorporate all of those things he talked about. Step programs, employee wellness and retention, uh, employee incentive programs. We talked about retention incentives and it's, it's, it goes into all of those things.
Well, I compliment you, uh, Marshall on doing that. That is a great step and, uh, executing on that is always challenging. Uh, because I don't know if you dig deep enough down in the, uh, department, you'll find my initial assessment back from 2014 through 2017 that identified all those as well. And many of those we did implement and were handed off to, um, Marshall Johns. Uh, and now subsequently handed off to the new marshal. So those plans do work as long as you've got community support, government support and agency support. And bottom line, the dollars to execute on all of that.
And Paul, if I hear right, um, when we're, you know, we've, we've identified three and possibly four funding sources, but we better be, uh, specific in what we're asking the voters to pay for and what it buys.
I, I would agree that you had a telephone caller a few people ago that I believe he said he was a former prosecutor.
Right.
And I agree with what he said. You do have to explain this to the community, uh, how their dollars are gonna be used and how, um, specific, and show the specific results of those dollars. Um, and no disrespect, because what I'm gonna say here now is policing is different than utilities. The people that are in policing are, are gonna be, uh, cut from a different cloth than the people that work in utilities. And in today's world, you have to pay for that. It's just the way it is.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, they're expecting that pay. Thousands have left the profession for all sorts of social and political reasons that are going on right now. And so you're competing with a much smaller employee pool and you're gonna have to provide them with a, a, the package that they want to come and spend 20 years here in Netherlands. Now I live here. I've been living here for 10 years. I think it's a beautiful place to live, but I also have connections.
We can't hear you.
Sure. Yeah. Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Okay. Go back like just a few, whatever you were saying a few moments ago.
So you just have to be able to provide all those things. Uh, you know, I'm from Missouri. The old saying is, uh, you know, don't tell me, show me. It's the show me state and that's kind of way the world of law enforcement is now. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Much appreciated. Again. Thank you.
I, I have a question for Miranda. Miranda, can, can we get a copy of the four-year strategic plan? Thank you.
Good. Um, okay, Miranda, who else is in the queue?
I don't see anyone.
Kayla, can you come back? Okay. Good.
Kay Levin's 1250 Eldora Road. I think, um, for me, when we start talking about things like this, it's consequences. And I'm gonna go back to the housing issue for just an instant. Um, I, correct me, please, if I misspeak or don't know. But why are the lodging places in Netherlands not paying a lodging tax? Sales tax, you get something when you buy something. You, whether you take an ice cream cone or a, a, a tee-shirt or a place to stay for the night. That then requires a, you are sa- you are selling something. You're selling lodging, you're selling ice cream, you're selling this. Sales tax. I pay a sales tax, state sale tax, county for my, you know, the, out at the ranch. Is there a sales tax being charged on all of the VRBOs and the, all of the lodging that's going on in Netherlands? And when you were talking about consequences as far as the reason people put their dogs on leashes now is because we give them a really hefty ticket when they don't.
So there is the occupational tax that all the short-term rentals pay into as well as the hotel.
So they, all of these lodging places are paying a lodging tax.
No, occupational tax.
It's called an occupational tax, but it's $2 per night per room.
Which is ridiculous. I'm sorry. Um, but I'm, just my opinion. It's, should be done on a percentage basis.
That, that, that's, that's, so that's where you're getting confused. As a home rule town, we could do a lodging tax and it could be percentage. As a statutory town, we are not allowed to do that. So we charge an occupational tax and that has to be a dollar night per night, per room.
And that's set by?
We set it. We set it because we were getting our heads ripped off two and a half years ago trying to regulate SDRs. And instead of the folks in here at that time saying, that's ridiculous, that you only wanna charge that much. It was 40 people in the room saying, that's ridiculous. You wanna tax our business. So as a BOT, we regulated it and we dealt with the crisis three years ago, which was perceived to be affordable housing. And now we're hearing there's community support to revisit that. So.
But the nice thing about a, a sales tax is, is that it's not actually in essence, coming from the people that are living here. It's coming from the people who are, I mean, too pound to buy whatever it is. So it's, it.
Home rule versus statutory. One's occupational, one is based upon percentages. So we can increase the dollar amount.
But your question, Kayla, I think is, shouldn't we be collecting sales tax on a transaction even though it's lodging? Is that accurate?
It's, you are selling a good.
Yeah, for sure. I pay sales. I definitely.
Sales, you know, ju- anyway, thank you. I think you understand.
Every hotel room I go to has both.
I'm pretty sure sales tax is paid on, um, short-term rentals.
Yeah, that's just Tanya. That's what I heard also, that they say they all pay spending sales tax.
They pay, they pay sales tax and then they pay an occupation tax on top of that.
Okay. So they, you are collecting a sales tax, but that goes, that, does that go to the town then?
It does. It goes to the state and the state remits it back to the town.
Miranda, is that, uh, and Rita, I address this to you two. Is that accurate or are we getting?
Yes, it is. And then I just wanna offer just quick clarification, um, that the voters did approve that occupational tax. And so the board trustees put the ballot language before and it voted by a pretty solid percentage. I don't remember exactly what it was, but.
We were the one that put the $2 amount is what I'm saying. So we could revisit that amount and go back to the voters and say, hey, now we want $10 per night per.
Jennifer, do you know how much that your sales tax is being charged, uh, just offhand?
4% is sales tax.
Period? Yeah. I pay 4.985.
Yeah, there's other stuff.
That seems really low too, but I'm not in town. Right. I, right.
There's other taxes that get piled on, on my sales tax bill on anything I buy in town. That's just the town's portion.
Yep.
It's actually almost a reality that town of Netherlands citizens pay more taxes to Boulder County than they pay the town of Netherlands. So I understand us asking for an increase in sales tax seems like this huge thing if you add all the numbers together. But in reality, where your money is going is to Boulder County and we are what? 1/10 of their tax base. Was that, was that correct and accurate? So then think about how much of that we actually get back.
Bingo. Thank you.
Can I make one clarification? There was a question asked about what is the DDA's current budget? Uh, the estimation was somewhere around 870,000. I reached out to the DDA's treasurer. In their accounts, they have somewhere around 100 and what? 1.3 million. They have 250,000 of that locked up in a basically credit, so that they have a line of credit. There is $600,000 of that allocated to current projects and there's another 300,000 of that sequestered for ongoing projects as a result of increases, cost overruns, inflation. So you put that together, we have about $300,000 of unencumbered funds in the DDA plus a $250,000 line of credit. So max that they could come is $550,000.
And I, I heavily qualify the word we.
And we, that was completely misspoken. The DDA has that. Not the town of Netherlands.
Okay. Thanks. Um, any more, uh, on the call inside? Are we complete?
It does look like there are no more, there's no more public comment.
Okay. Um, last call for public comment? Let, let's, let's go around the table then as a board. Tanya, you go first. Um, what do you, any closing thoughts we should take away from this section?
Uh, well, let's, yeah, I feel like we've gone far off topic in a way, but yeah, I want to, uh, establish a raise in sales tax and maybe it's just a 0.5% if that's what town of Ned thinks they can do. And I would like to say it would be for the police department, but I also think that some of it needs to go to other departments. So that's the problem of how we can phrase that. That's why we were saying just for all departments and wages and. And then I like what, uh, if we do a property tax, that could go towards infrastructure. It's not gonna be that much money for us anyway, but, um, so that, yeah, I think we should go for all three.
Thanks, Tanya. Um, yeah, that's important. The, um, the, the, this is, uh, we can put something on the ballot. That's what we're talking about tonight. But that doesn't sell it. Um, and I think if we are serious about this, we're each, we're all gonna have to go out and sell it and in a way that the, the public will support. And Ty, you know, we have a lot of needs to take care of, but I think we need to be really careful when we go to the voters to identify what we're doing and, um, why we're doing it.
At, the 1% was gonna give us, uh, possibly like half a million. Um, which would be just enough to, for the police department. Um, and which is great. And, and so if that's the path we end up going, we can definitely earmark it for that and I'm all for that.
Okay. You were gonna say something, Karen?
Yeah, we might have better luck just taking, um, one ballot issue, one tax increase to the voters this go round and have it be, uh, something that can meet our immediate needs. Um, and then look at, uh, more sales tech, more increases in future elections.
Got it. Thanks.
I do agree. I think the marijuana tax should pass, but I don't think it was gonna give us enough to fund the police department even at 10%. So that is why the only one that would do that would be the sales tax.
Yeah, there's, that's got, that's a bigger lever to pull. I think you're right. Jonathan?
And I'll, I'll go back to while we have an immediate crisis. I think this immediate crisis is a result of a long-term problem, which is a lack of an event horizon as a town for understanding future needs, future infrastructure needs, future staffing needs. All these things that we just heard the former chief speak to, uh, having a full benefit package, having employees know where they're going in five years as opposed to that. Um, I am very interested in this police tax that was just mentioned. And so I'd kinda like to see if it's possible for town staff to, if, if we are aware of that or if that is a Missouri thing and not a Colorado thing, in which case then nip it in the butt and we're doing everything we can.
You can word it, we can word it the way we wanna word it.
Yeah, it would be, I mean, I, it could be a tax on anything, but you'd have to decide what it is. So statutory towns can implement sales tax, use tax, um, the occupation tax and property tax essentially. And the special retail marijuana.
So then it would be wording the sales tax increase specifically earmarked for policing.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. So I would agree with what Mayor Protemaholt said, is that we all have to really come back next time, go figure out what people really want and sell this. But I would say all three because we need more. But I would say all three, because we need more funding sources as a town and the voters will tell us very clearly if we put three things on the ballot, where they're willing to pay more to pay the paper and where they are not.
And, and the fire department's in the same bucket right now.
Correct, I believe.
Okay, does that, I address this to the three, does this give you the guidance you need?
It does, yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
We're good? Okay, are we through section eight then? No pun intended. Okay. Um, let's move, if we are, let's move on to section nine, other business. What have we got tonight and who wants to bring something up? Your floor, Karen?
I have to find the email. So the Big Springs neighborhood is doing a get-together. It's going to be a potluck. And let me see what I have here for information about it. This is, is organized by residents, not the government or the town. Monday, August fifteenth, five to seven PM. It's in the garden and community room of Ned Presbyterian Church, two ten North Jefferson Street. Bring a dish to share and a beverage, meet your neighbors and get updates on issues important to our neighborhood from town officials, welfare partners, Boulder Watershed Collective and Boulder County Open Space and more. Kids are welcome, there's a playground on site. So that's Monday, August fifteenth, five to seven PM at Ned Presbyterian Church.
Thanks. And then our neighborhood, uh, uh, over in Third Street is, is having something similar this Saturday. It's not limited to Third Street people. I'm a Fourth Street person, but I'm coming. Okay, are there, is there, are there other discussion items that we need to get to tonight before we adjourn?
Tom, this is John Baumholder, I'm sorry. I just want to point, uh, bring up that the county commissioners will be at the community center on August eleventh. I believe at five-thirty, is that right? Um, yeah. Yeah, so if you want to come talk to your county commissioners, they'll be there for a couple of hours, please come. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, hon, that's good. I also reached out this week to the mayor of Louisville, who's about to become a county commissioner. She, I think she won by the slimmest of margins on two recounts. She, I think out of fifty-five thousand votes, it was twenty-seven votes or something she won by. But she's got a lot of things that I think Sab is going to be able to work with. She's got a real interest in everything from electric vehicle charging and electrification to policing, affordable housing. And she knows, she's already researching where the pockets are money that might benefit us our. So I'm looking forward to talking with the current commissioners on the eleventh. And then at some point, I want Ashley Saltzman to talk with Sab. I talked with, a little bit with Eric about it this evening, but I think there's a lot that we need to work with the current commissioners and the next commissioner coming in. Any, anybody else want to say something? We're, Officer Fine Lovin, anything you want to add? Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, well, thank you, you too. Nope, nothing to add.
And keep less felonies coming. No, just kidding.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, I'll second.
Call the vote, please.
Just, excuse me, Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
And Trustee Corbalan? Thank you.
We adjourn at nine oh one, ten oh one in St. Louis. Thanks for staying on with us, Tanya. I appreciate it, your being here tonight.
Oh, yeah, thank you, guys. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
You as well.
Bye-bye.